Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Councilmember Rebholz will be dialing in, or we'll be dialing him shortly, so he is, will be part of the meeting tonight from a remote. As I ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance, I ask you to stay standing afterwards for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for a family going through a tough time in Madison, as anyone following what was going on in Madison earlier this week felt as apparent the tough things you can go through. The Morano family lost their son. Mary Morano is a crossing guard out there every day crossing her children. The brother, Michael Morano, is maintenance in this building, so a moment of silence to recognize her lost brother and son and how far they're going through. Welcome on this cold evening, second month in a row that we've had a Wednesday meeting, a fairly rare event. We had a great gathering on Condorsa Way for Veterans Day, recognizing all the veterans. And I know we have several veterans in the audience, so two days after Veterans Day, as I said on Veterans Day, one day a year is not adequate to thank you. We should be doing it 365, so thank you. Congratulations to Rob Cattinello, and welcome to another three years.
Thank you.
And also, we'll see over here on the wall, Pat Rowe, councilman-elect. He'll be auditing the next few meetings, so he can hit the ground running, but as I said earlier, to a smaller group, he is obviously no stranger to council meetings, and he has been working very closely with the council for many years on two key committees, and that was Shared Services and the Green Village Road School project. The Employee of the Month, and it's good to see Jimmy Finelli, who is not the Employee of the Month this time, but it's always an honor when you see someone that sees work a great person, and nominates an Employee of the Month. So Jimmy was nominated. Luis Alicia of the Department of Public Works for his expertise and dedicated work in trimming, pruning, reshaping the shrubs and trees on all the borough properties. And not only did Jimmy recognize it, but he heard the compliments from all of our residents that saw this fine work. So congratulations to Luis, and Jimmy, again, thank you for taking the time to do the nomination. Anniversary, at one point, we celebrated this person's retirement, but sometimes you just love this place so much, stay on. But Ruth Tisi is now celebrating 30 years with the Borough of Madison, so if you're in the building or the zoning office at any time, you'll see Ruth providing the extra support. We'll probably hear a bit more from our liaison to public safety on what has gone on in town as far as fires over the last couple of weeks, a very tough time, but the fire department and all the supporters came through. There was the fire on Green Avenue, a home. Officer Kevin Boone kicked the door in to rescue one of the residents that was trapped in the kitchen. And then, a week ago Tuesday, the fire on Green Village Road on that beautiful apartment building. And what I want to share right now is a letter from Mark Yeager. Some people, many people will know him because he grew up in Madison. He was the owner and developer of that building, and, you know, barely a week away from the tragedy, and as he's working through what he's going to do to recover from that, he felt the need to write a letter to thank all that were involved, so please bear with me as I read through this. Dear Mayor, as we are well aware, very early last Wednesday morning, we witnessed a devastating fire at 39 Green Village Road. The 90-year-old building was two months away from completion of an extensive capital renovation plan when fire struck and severely damaged the building. The primary purpose of this note is to tell you how appreciative I was of the Madison Fire Department's efforts last Wednesday morning. Fire Chief Lou DeRosa and his entire department did a spectacular job at controlling the fire, protecting the surrounding structures, maintaining a safe and orderly environment in the midst of a tremendous amount of chaos, and leading the coordinated effort with other Madison departments and agencies, as well as first responders and 11 other municipal fire departments who were called to the scene. The fire department's effort and professionalism was something that all borough residents and officials should be proud of, and I'm personally very thankful for. I would also like to acknowledge the other Madison first responders who was present on the site last Wednesday morning, at a significant comfort we all took as that things were all being taken care of. Chief Datchison in the Madison Police Department, Mike Piano here in the audience, and Madison Electric Department, David Maines from DPW Madison Water Department, Mark Cacavell in the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, all responded with the same speed and professionalism as the fire department. They too should be commended and recognized for the tremendous effort and contribution on the scene. I'd also like to thank Father George of St. Vincent's for providing water to the first responders and all the support they needed, and also opening the rectory for any neighbors needing housing for the night. Watching that beautiful old building burn last Wednesday morning was a gut-wrenching experience that I will never forget. Thankfully, and largely due to the actions of the Madison first responder teams, no one was injured, and all that was damaged was the building itself. I am eternally thankful for that. I have always been extremely proud of my roots in the Madison community, but never more so after experience and support of all the Madison professionals that came to assist last Wednesday morning. Signed, Mark Yeager, Principal of MRY Associates. So, great job all, and I think we should just give them a wall of hands. Next week, several of the elected officials and borough professionals are heading down to the League of Municipalities, and it's not just attending workshops that help us serve the Borough of Madison better, but we're actually going to be collecting some hardware down there this year, which is not too rare for us. We will be receiving the 2013 Innovation in Government Award for the Chief Executive Council for Madison program, which was initiated with the borough, the mayor's leadership, along with Quest Diagnostics and Drew University. And we've had the efforts through that organization with Union Beach, also working with the leaders of tomorrow. I witnessed a panel yesterday at Drew University, as we had several CEOs helping Drew students think about the steps they need to take to become business leaders. And the other thing we'll be doing is accepting the Silver Certification for Sustainable New Jersey. We received 455 points, far in excess of the number required, and it's the highest point value of any municipality of our size in New Jersey. And so we will be receiving a Sustainable Jersey Champion Award, so thank you, Betsy Ullman, Ostry, Jim Burnett, and all the volunteers that made this possible. And I see a couple of Academy Road residents in the audience, and so you're obviously always welcome to stay and comment, but I just want to bring you up to date that we will be, the engineering department is working on the red engineering plans for the 2014 projects, which include Academy Road, but also include several others, such as Durwood, Fletcher, that have been mentioned before. The funding cycle, as we've mentioned a few times, is we fund it starting in January. We'll have those discussions in capital. What we're planning to do this year are twofold. One is get the capital budget taken care of as soon as possible, so we can, we know where we're going. And number two, as we're doing right now, is have the plans in place. We don't want to go out to bid in June, July, and we're all of a sudden, we're now at, towards the end of the construction season. We want to, as soon as the construction season is ready, we're ready to go. So that is the plan, and we will keep you up to date, and certainly, as I said, we always love to see smiling faces here, but if you want to get up to date, you can give me a call, Ray Cody or Jim Burnett, and we can just give you the latest updates. And now with reports from committees, and we're going to hold on for just a second as we bring Councilman Rebholz on board. I'm sorry, I jumped the greeting ahead of the minutes, but it's good to have Red on. Yeah. Ed, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, Ed, it's Jim Burnett, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, we're around.
All right, welcome, Ed. We saved you listening to my comments, and we're now on to minutes for approval. So I asked for a motion of the minutes of October 16th, 2013.
I'll move them, I'll second.
And these were discussed in executive, can I have roll call vote, please?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Motion for the regular minutes of October 16th, 2013.
I'll move the regular minutes of October 16th.
I'll second.
Discussion. And Ed, you're fine with those? Okay, roll call vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
You may have a motion for the executive minutes of October 28th, 2013.
I'll move them, I'll second.
Already discuss, already, oh, we, yeah, little too much there, okay. I was getting scared hearing my own voice. Where were we? Motion for the regular minutes of October 28th, 2013.
I think we need a vote.
Executive, that's where we were, all right.
We did first and second.
Yep, so we, roll call vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
All right, a motion for the regular minutes of October 28th, 2013.
I'll move the regular minutes of October 28th.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call vote?
Mr. Cattinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowicz?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes, okay. All right, moving to reports from committee, and Ed, we mentioned, to save your speaking time and all that, we'll have Carmella provide your report also, so it's still good? Sounds good, okay. So, Ms. Vitale, if you can do health and utilities.
I will, thank you, Mayor. On Friday, November 29th, the Madison Elks will be hosting a blood drive from 10:00 a.m. in the morning to 3:00 p.m. The co-hosts are the Venture Boy Scouts and the American Red Cross, and the lodge is located, as most of you know, at 192 Main Street. On blood drive day, be sure to eat well, drink plenty of liquids, and bring an ID. If you have any questions, you could call John Kennedy, who is kind of chairing this with the Venture Boy Scouts, and his number is 973-377-0373. Or just go to rosenet.org, there's lots of information, but the blood drive is very important. We're going into a season that we may need a lot of help. As a safety reminder, if you have any unwanted or expired medications, the Madison Police Department at the Public Safety Building offer a 24-hour secure drug take-back program, and there's a nice container there. You could go in at any time and drop off any of that medication. Sometimes it's easier to do that, because they know what to do as far as environmentally safe and disposing of those. The Health Department is also sponsoring a men's cancer screening. It's free for men on Monday, December 9th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. at the Madison Health Department. The cancer screening is open to men 18 years of older who reside in Madison, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, and Springfield, which are our contract towns. It is necessary for you to make an appointment, so you can call the Health Department, you know, starting on Thursday, November 14th, so, you know, please make your appointments there. This is, I'm doing this for Ed Rebholz, this is from the Madison Electric Department, Mike Piano Superintendent. They are continuing installation of new poles, secondary and primary voltage cables on Oxford Lane and Canterbury Road, and they just completed an installation of Don Link's Monument Light, so they've been working on that. Mike and I talked about it last night, we haven't seen it in the dark yet, so we have to go up there and take a look and make sure it's working good, but thanks, Mike, for that extra help. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Cattinello?
Thank you, Mayor. The sports fields parking lot at the former Bailey Ellard property has been completed by Tilcon New York General Contractors. Fencing installation and final signage have been installed. This project was completed on budget and on schedule. The project remains to be inspected and approved by the licensed site remediation professional, and then final documents can be sent to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection notifying it of the project completion. The Green Avenue reconstruction work continues, managed by Seffeli &amp; Sons General Contractors. Carb and sidewalk improvements will continue this week despite the cold temperatures. We are hopeful to have the milling and paving completed prior to Thanksgiving, weather permitting. This project is proceeding on budget and on schedule. The Hartley Dodge boiler replacement is underway by Omega Service General Contractors. The new boilers have been operating manually since Tuesday morning, and temporary boiler trailer has been removed from the rear of the building. Although a significant number of punchless items remain to be completed, staff now has both heat and hot water for the fall season, and the project has not caused any lost workdays. Settlement of multiple contractor delays prior to closeout is still required, and meetings will be scheduled this month to address the balance of claims. The 2013 water main replacement is near completion by Garcia Construction General Contractors. Contractor intends to use infrared paving treatment on Park Avenue County Road in order to obtain the release of the county bonds. We are, DPW informs me they're starting their second round of leaf pickup. Again, the preferred methodology is to use bags, and if you're going to put it on the curb, please do your best not to have them spill out into the roadway. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Friday, November 28th, is the annual Christmas Walk and Parade. The walk and parade starts at 4:00, and the tree lighting will be at 5:30 that day. MAC will be hosting an arts festival that will go on throughout the festivities, and then the day after, Saturday, November 30th, is Small Business Saturday in Madison. Please, everybody, try to support the businesses in town. A lot of them are just getting behind a shoestring right now, and our downtown is one of the most important parts of Madison, so please try to support them. The DDC, again, helping to support the downtown, from November 22nd through the end of the year, is supporting a recommendation that all the one-hour parking spots be made two-hour parking spots, so look out for that, the signage will be put up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The mayor has already spoken a little bit about the fire department, but the fire department was very busy over the past four weeks. Four firefighters completed a 20-hour weekend course given at the Morris County Fire Training Academy titled "Firefighter Safety and Survival." Over the past four weeks, the Madison Fire Prevention Bureau has visited all the schools, grades K through 8, six daycare centers, and our seniors at 15 Chateau Terry, teaching fire safety in the home to approximately 2,500 residents and students. Over the past four weeks, the fire department responded to 129 calls, 78 were fire-related, 51 were medical assists. Of the 78 fire calls, five were structured fires. They also responded to four mutual aid requests, and we received mutual aid four times from our neighboring departments. So far in 2013, the fire department has responded to 1,059 calls. The first structural fire was Monday, October 14th, at 2:00 p.m. in the bathroom at Dunkin' Donuts. Cause was due to a malfunctioning exhaust fan. The fire damage was contained to the bathroom, and smoke filled the store, but it was reopened after the Board of Health inspected the premises, I think, the next day. And then they assisted Chatham on October 28th. On October 29th, they had, there was a fire on the third floor of 300 Madison Avenue, and the offices were filled with smoke and had to be ventilated, but they were able to contain the damage to the wall of origin. And then on October 31st, they really were busy. They had the big fire on 125 Green Avenue in the kitchen, and luckily, no one was hurt. And then at 39 Green Village Road on November 5th, where the towns, 11 towns assisted us. And they were on the scene starting late, at 11:24 p.m. Tuesday, November 5th, and they were still on the scene the next day at 6:30 a.m. And I know I got the call at noon time that day to tell me that, what had happened. So we have a tremendous fire department, and I want to thank them very, very much for keeping us safe. And for the police department, I want to congratulate Officer Shannon and his wife, they just had a baby on November 11th, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Walkowicz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget process, which is a process that we seem to be in at least half the year, is well underway. We've been going over departmental requests, getting a better idea of what it is each department would like to have, if at all possible, and we're also looking at the revenue side. Two things we're going to attempt to do a little differently than last year. One is to talk about the budget in a multi-year context, and the other one is to focus in on certain aspects of the budget that are really key drivers of the end result, and do that at public meetings. I have some information and updates on shared services, all good. We have, as some of you may know, a shared service agreement with Chatham Borough regarding construction code functions, electric, plumbing, and fire. We're expanding that basically to do all of their construction code work, and we estimate that this could generate as much as $75,000 a year. Obviously, it depends on how much construction is ongoing. It's not quite approved yet, but obviously, if we weren't optimistic, I wouldn't be talking about it, so we anticipate this closing before the end of the year. Earlier on, I had also mentioned expanding the joint court to include Morris Township. There was one small piece of that that we've been waiting on, and that is for the assignment judge of Morris County to approve this arrangement, and indeed, he did, and so we're looking forward to welcoming Morris Township into this, into our court system, and that should generate revenue of approximately $50,000 a year. So it's nice to see upticks in these, and I have one more to talk about, so good evening. The other one is, has to do with our police department. Our police officers now are able to provide service for profit and nonprofit organizations in town on their own time, and when they do that, they bill at $65 an hour. 60 goes to the patrolman, 5 goes to the borough for use of the car, insurance, et cetera. That number, that $5, has clearly been on the low side, and the total of 65 is well below the market. So we've asked to update and upgrade that fee to $80. 60 would still go to our officers, but now 20 would come back to the borough, and our police officers are fine with it, there's no reason why we shouldn't do it. We don't expect that it'll have an adverse impact on the demand for their services, and based on the amount of service they provided last year, we're anticipating that our revenue generated will go to $100,000. So we have three things to talk about, all of which are, if not home runs, pretty close. And then finally, I just want to say that strategic planning committees are in formation. We have a lot of volunteers, we always talk about how wonderful this town is in terms of attracting volunteers. This is no exception, it's very much in rule, and we will soon be talking among ourselves as to who should chair these various committees, and we'll be coming out with that information, and in addition, who will be on those committees. If you have not put your name forward and are interested, please do so, and I would just like to point out that I believe a lot of our response is due to Sally Capone's very nice article in The Eagle, so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You. Communications and petitions?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, this is the first of two invitations for discussion. This is the one with the limiting rules, where you may comment on any of the agenda discussions and resolutions. The agenda discussions we have tonight are the Quarterly Madison Athletic Foundation Report, and a recommendation to adopt an advisory audit committee. The resolutions are all listed, and a reminder on ordinances, we have ordinances 45 and 46, which are, we have hearings for tonight, which means if you want to comment on those, that will be the time to comment when we call up those hearings. And the other ordinances that are listed for introduction, we'll have a hearing at our next meeting, so you'll be able to comment on those at that time. So with that guideline, and knowing that you must keep your comments to three minutes or less, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and then you can start going. Anyone wishing to comment on the agenda items or resolutions. Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda, and we move on to agenda discussions. And we have the Madison Athletic Foundation Quarter Report, Brian Agnew, welcome.
Brian Agnew, 15 East Lane, Madison, New Jersey. This will serve as the third quarter update on behalf of the Madison Athletic Foundation and our efforts to raise $1.275 million for debt reduction for the MRC, the Madison Recreation Complex, Turf Field, Turf Field Complex. Earlier this year, we presented a check for $100,000 to the council, on top of the $400,000 that we have raised to date, so for a total of $500,000 versus the original goal of $1.275 million. We've been active in 2013. In the back half of 2013, we had applied, and we've been awarded a $25,000 grant from a local foundation. We received 18 incremental club donations, M Club donations, in the year 2013. Field signs continue to be underway, so far, there's 12 installed and one additional that's waiting to be hung up. We anticipate the 2013 annual appeal, which we did last year and was very successful, that mailing will go out within the next couple of weeks, and we've been in contact through Rob Cattinello, who is our council liaison, and we are soliciting corporate donors for sponsorships at the complex. I wanted to add, we also built the M Club wall, funded it internally, and to date, have sold 35 signs with the goal to obviously sell an incremental 65, which is the capacity for the first side of the M Club wall. As a reminder, the M Club field signs are $3,500, so so far, we've raised about $100,000 from 35 signs. We anticipate 2014 being incredibly active. We, as you know, we've committed to do the $100,000 raffle every other year. We did it in 2012, so 2014 will be another year of the 50/50 raffle. That is going to be launched in early 2014, with an anticipated spring, 2014 drawing. That raised $80,000 last time. We will also endeavor to undertake the annual event, which we did at the MRC complex last year, that's going to be a spring event. We will also do the annual appeal. Our goal is to do, to try and raise another 10 M Club signs in 2014. We're continuing the field sign program, and I think the net of all that is, if the balance of the commitment of $1.275 million is roughly $775,000, which over an ensuing 2014 to 2018 period, works out to about $155,000 per year, I would simply say we're confident in our goals for 2014.
Comments, and just a point of how we're going to be doing things with our one council member on the phone is we'll take all our discussion items, discuss-
million is roughly seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which over an ensuing 2014 to 2018 period, works out to about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars per year, I would simply say we're confident in our goals for 2014.
Comments, and just a point of how we're going to be doing things with our one council member on the phone is we'll take all our discussion items, discussion in the room, and I'll just call on Ed to see if he has anything to add at that point, because he can't raise his hand easily. So, any comments or questions for Brian?
Well, I, I have a question.
Yes, Astrid?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian, you said you've raised five hundred thousand dollars?
To date, yep. Four hundred plus a hundred.
To date, okay. Does that mean, like, over a period of years? I mean, the twenty-
Yeah, since, since we started.
So then, I guess the question is, of the, of the five hundred thousand dollars, is, was part of that in payment for the field house? Was the field house, or did it come directly to the borough to offset the debt?
Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, the field house was outside of that? What's that? Yeah, the field house was outside of that.
It's, it's part of it.
It is part of it.
So, which is why the, the goal is higher than the, the goal that was discussed in, or towards the field itself.
I know, I know that, the goal that, when we had the meeting, the numbers that I communicated. Okay. Maybe we can take it offline, but that, that's our understanding.
All right, yeah. I don't have it, the notes are front of me, so, yeah. So, okay.
So what was the cost of the field house?
Do you have the actual construction numbers?
No.
No, 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 not even.
Oh.
Hang on, we'll get you the exact numbers.
Hundred and thirteen.
Hundred and thirteen.
Then does the remainder of that sum then go towards the debt of the, the turf fields? Or were there other expenses in that five hundred thousand dollars that go towards other parts of the, the complex?
Everything has been self-funded, so, yes, so like, they paid for the wall out of it, and, and you have to pay for the plaque, things like that. So, you pay for the cost of, you pay for the cost of the, of the field signs as well, so.
It, I think it would be helpful, if it's not too much trouble, to, if you could, you know, submit an, a list of, of what you paid for in that number, so we would have a good idea in accounting. I mean, if you could write, you know, it could be a written report that accounts for what was spent, so, so we know what the fu-
Oh, do it in writing.
Brendan, you're, you're welcome to add, but please, please step up to the microphone.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
The MAF made a hundred and seventy thousand dollars debt payment last year.
Okay.
And, uh-
In 2012, or, on 2013?
In 2013, the beginning of 2013, there was a seventy thousand dollar payment, and then a hundred thousand dollars in May.
Okay.
Uh, end of May. And then in 2012 and 2013, total, MAF paid all of the interest on any bond on the field.
Thank you.
I think what might be helpful for the next, next, like, but, thank you, I, I think what might, might be helpful for the next report, Brian, is maybe work with Jim, so he can come up with a standard report form, because, you know, at this point, I don't think we need a PowerPoint or anything, but it's just, you know, I get confused on the te, you know, I'm worried about these numbers being on the test, and I can't write them all down, so.
It should be awfully simple going forward, though, because there's no expenses that will be incurred by the MAF. I mean, if anything, it's very nominal, but to your point-
Yeah, except for like, the cost of the plaque.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to write it down to see what goes to what.
The cost of the, so if someone makes the M-club, how much do those plaques cost? Like, a hundred and forty dollars or something?
Yeah, no, it's like a hundred bucks.
The cost of that, and the cost to make the field sign, that's pretty much it.
But the big expenses-
You'd want to do that all day long.
The big expenses were, were, were the field house, obviously, which was outside of the, the realm, though, of, there's been so many iterations, obviously, but outside of the realm of this one point two seven five million, and then just building the wall, that's it. Yeah. Which was about ten thousand.
Bob?
Okay, yeah, so I just want, make sure I got these numbers straight in my head. So you, this goes out through the end of 2018, so you got-
Yes.
Five more years.
We've got five years.
And you, so you're talking-
We owe seven seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand a year.
What? One seventy-five a year? One fifty-five. Seven seventy-five divided by five, one fifty-five.
Okay, one fifty-five, okay, that's it.
Any other questions or discussion? Ed, Ed, do you have any questions, or?
No, it's, it's a little, little difficult to follow the conversation, but I think that's absolutely in place.
All right.
Want clarification?
I'm sorry, because there have been so many iterations, we kind of, you know, we've been back and forth and back and forth a million times. We went from, to Resolution one seventy-nine, 2013. That was really the formalized agreement, or the re-formalized agreement from the original agreement.
Yep, that, that's-
We kind of went from there, which was, Resolution says, MAF agrees to, one point two seven five, raise to date as of April, four hundred thousand. So we, that, we took that as zero hour and moved from there. We don't, we gave the hundred thousand dollars in May, so.
Makes sense.
I mean, if we try to go back, I think if we try to, you know, if we try to go back to the beginning, we all-
Right, now, that, 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 that works. Ben and then Rob?
That's okay.
Oh, you're good, Rob.
Whatever, I was going.
Rob?
Oh, I was gonna say-
You have a question for our last witness?
Well, I do, in fact, but, that's why I said you should stay up there. Believe it or not, we don't see each other that much.
Brendan is the brains of the organization, by the way, if you can't tell.
So, just to clarify, going forward, no user fees, field rentals, that's, that's outside your totals, right?
Right.
Right, that, that's fine. And then, do you anticipate making another payment in 2013, or the next payment will be in 2014?
I think if we, if we got the, the proceeds from the foundation in 2013, we would make that payment.
Yeah, but it's probably not going to hit till January, so you'll make it then, okay.
Depends when the check hits.
Carmella?
Yeah, can I, can I just ask a simple thing, because I'm going like that. Can we get a copy of that report, at least, Brian, you know, so that we can distribute it, you know, amongst us, so, you know, we just keep all of those numbers clarified?
Which, which report?
Well, the, whatever you've been talking about.
I'm working on the one page here.
Okay, the one page is fine.
Well, I think, I, I'm sorry.
Ben?
This is what I submitted today.
There was an earlier suggestion.
Yeah, we, yeah, we never, it didn't-
No, we never got it.
Yep, so that was a-
Thank you. I'll, I'll take one.
No.
Yep.
No, thanks very much.
Yep.
I'm a visual person, sorry.
Was there an earlier suggestion? I thought I heard that Jim Burnett would work.
I, I, I thought if we could come up with a consistent report, that, that'll make it a lot ea, easier on a quarterly basis, so it's boom, boom, you know.
Exactly.
Raised prior, raised in the, this quarter, and-
The, the simple overriding numbers are one point two seven five, five hundred to date, seven seventy-five to go, one fifty-five over five years. That's our goal.
Yep.
We're on track to meet it.
Sounds good.
Fingers crossed.
Yep. Keep those donations coming. Any other comments or questions?
I got a new M-club today, so, we got, I got an M-club today from a client, which is nice, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, Advisory Audit Committee, Ben?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no audit committee. Now, that's not necessarily a huge oversight, but as a former partner of mine used to say, that we need to practice good financial hygiene, and good financial hygiene suggests you have an audit committee. It's not here to solve any problems. We're not second guessing anyone. I've had long conversations with our CFO, Robert Califford. He's on board and thinks it's a good idea as well. The notion is that the process of auditing our books is still the responsibility of the CFO with council oversight. But the role of a committee like this is to have a hand in recommending who the auditor would be, reviewing the auditor's results with the CFO, and just overseeing the general risk control mechanisms that we have here in the borough. It is, you know, I feel I have to emphasize this, because we've never had one before, and you might ask, well, why do we need one now? And it's not a question of need. It's, it's just more a question of completeness. It's, it's, I, I have to say, I was very surprised that we didn't have one. I tried to find out how many municipalities in New Jersey have them. I got nowhere. But I was left with the impression that we would certainly not be alone by having one. The notion is that it would be made up of three to five residents of the community, joined by the finance chair of the council, who would serve only a single year. He or she would serve just one year, and then be replaced by the, the backup liaison to finance for the additional year. The members of the committee would serve for three years. And we would start off the committee, obviously, by staggering terms, so we'd appoint, appoint someone for a year, someone else for two, and someone else yet again for three. They would be responsible for reporting to the council, and the council would then have the benefit of their input in making decisions regarding auditors, any changes in how we do our business and accounting, et cetera. So that's the proposal, and as I said, I just think it's a question of, of basically dotting an I and crossing a T.
Yep. So, two key things while, while I open it up. This is typical best practices, as you mentioned, and number two is the idea advisory, that this is not taking any rights, responsibilities that the council is, needs to take care of. Carmella?
Yeah, Ben, I, you know, I've been thinking about this, and you're talking basically just the municipality, but included in the municipality are, you know, the offshoots of people, whether they're nonprofit or whatever, okay, in the town that we subsidize, okay, that are already, that are also doing audits on a yearly basis. Are you, are you going to bring those in to kind of take a look at all those audits? I mean, for instance, you know, you have the library that does an audit.
Right.
You know, even right down to the Thursday Morning Club does an audit, you know, and we subsidize some of those. Have you thought about, you know, encompassing all of this? You know?
The, the short answer is no.
No?
Uh, I didn't think of expanding the scope of our audits because of having this committee. On the other hand, this committee may well come back to the council and recommend that we do just what you said. And that's the sort of thing I would be expecting from a committee like this.
Bob?
Ben, is this going to be just limited to auditing? Will it have any bleed over into the budget process?
No, it's just auditing.
Just auditing?
Okay. Auditing including risk controls, but that's, you know, it's part of the process.
Rob?
When you mention risk manager, we're not talking about, like, derivatives, right? We're just talking, I, I, I mean, I've seen it, you know, right, so, it's just-
I, I don't envision any change from what we do now.
But they, okay, would they consider that?
When I say risk management, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, that's not something they would consider, right? Or would the, since they'll be doing the audit for the borough, one would assume that they would also do audits for the electric utility and the water utility, or is that, would that be separate?
Those are part of the borough audit.
There's part of the borough's audit now, so they would fall in the same scope.
So we do, we are doing some hedging, right? So, I mean, are, are we gonna, is this all going to be encompassed in that, or?
No. I didn't, I, I didn't view them, when I said risk management, I meant more in terms of, of the, the risk of the accounting risk. I wasn't thinking in terms of the practical financial risk.
And, and may I just ask, why, why do you think that three years is a good term?
Arbitrary. I, you know, I-
But it's fairly consistent, I think, with many of our, that we, many of our committees kind of go in-
A lot of our committees do that. I mean, it is arbitrary. If, if there was some feeling it should be longer or shorter, I, you know, I doubt it.
I think kind of our model, not to the T, is an annual appointment versus a rotating three years on various committees, and so whether you want to ha, preserve some sort of continuity by having rotating three years, I think it's-
Yeah, I, I do think it has to be at least two, because of the way the audit cycle goes. So you'd have a committee, and they would, they would be opining on who should do the audit, but they wouldn't have the follow-through of actually working with them.
And then just the last one, in the, in the management plan, I, I don't know if you're gonna hold hard and fast to this, but I believe the rule of thumb is that you want to try to limit council liaison to two years for any one thing.
Right, yep.
So, if in year one, the, I mean, I guess, so in year one, the finance liaison-
I don't think Ed's listening. Sorry.
Yeah, he got bored, he, so, so in year one, the finance liaison is the, leads the committee?
Yes.
This, does this automatically assume we have the same, then year two would be the backup?
Yes.
I mean, so, so the backup in year one could be different in year two, if that's-
Yeah, I, I think the goal was that there would not be the same chair two years in a row.
Yeah.
So if the, if the chair was different year one, year two, it could be the chair two years in a row, but it's not the same person two years in a row.
Running this commit, yeah.
Correct. That's the, that's the intent behind that.
Okay. Any other questions? And I do believe we do not have Ed on the line. We'll see. All right. So this is Ordinance forty-seven, two thousand thirteen, which is listed for introduction. Again, we'll have a hearing in a week and a half. And now we move on to ordinances for hearing. Ask the Borough Clerk to read the statement.
Okay. Ordnances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at a regular meeting of the council, held on October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. They were both posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to members of the general public requesting copies.
I call the ordinances for second reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance forty-five, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, supplementing chapter one thirty-six of the Code of the Borough of Madison, entitled Parks, Establishing User Fees for Borough Recreation Programs and Establishing the Process to Rent Borough Parks and Fields.
I open the hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on Ordinance forty-five dash two thousand thirteen? Please step, step to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hear-
Mayor, I move Ordinance forty-five dash two thousand thirteen.
I second.
Council discussion? Being done, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
And I believe we lost Mr. Redbolt. Yes, I have it.
Okay. And I call up Ordinance forty-six, oh, no, I'm sorry. I, I declare Ordinance forty-five dash two thousand thirteen, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance forty-six, two thousand thirteen, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter one sixty-three of the Borough Code entitled Smoking, to prohibit smoking on all borough property, including public parks and recreational areas.
I open the hearing for Ordinance forty-six dash two thousand thirteen. Ask anyone wishing to comment, please step up to lectern, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Hi, my name is Alan Kance. Address is Eighty River Road in Summit, New Jersey. I'm here in support of this ordinance. I'm very excited to see a town with which I have a connection. I was a Drew University student, graduated from Drew University in two thousand and ten. I'm very excited to see this town considering making its parks a hundred percent smoke-free. I think it's a wonderful move for the town, a wonderful move for the community. Already in, in this area, we've seen Chatham Township and Borough both make their parks a hundred percent smoke-free, and we've seen a lot of excitement in Madison over the idea of going a hundred percent smoke-free. We saw the Municipal Alliance and the Board of Health both express strong support for smoke-free parks. And what we've seen across the state when towns make their parks smoke-free is that people seem to really like it. We, we now have over a hundred and twenty municipalities in the state of New Jersey with a hundred percent smoke-free parks, and what we see over and over again is that once people see that smoke-free parks are an option, they come to expect it as the norm and are shocked that they ever lived any other way. And so we're excited to, to see Madison residents and, and people who live nearby, like me, get the opportunity to enjoy a hundred percent smoke-free parks in Madison.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Karen Blumenfeld, and I'm Executive Director of Global Advisors on Smoke-Free Policy, and I reside in Summit at one four seven Summit Avenue in Summit, New Jersey. And I, too, graduated from Drew, but a little earlier than Alan, in nineteen eighty-four. And I have to say, as a side note, when I entered this building and this council chambers, it reminded me so much of Meat Hall. This is an absolutely beautiful room. It's just magnificent. So, a little side note. But I, I love Madison. My mom grew up actually in Chatham, and that's where my parents live now. And we were so pleased when Chatham Borough and the township did smoke-free parks. I want to thank, there's so many people to thank, actually, that have been supportive of smoke-free parks. Council President Vitale, of course, and the fellow council members, the mayor, the Health Department, the Municipal Alliance. This truly was a collaborative effort on beh- This truly was a collaborative effort on behalf of the community, and it really is all about helping kids live tobacco-free lives and creating healthy environments for everyone that either resides in the community or visits the community. And so you probably saw these signs the last time, when Alan and Lucille Talbot as well, and Christine's here from the Health Department, and Lisa Guller were also really helpful. These are the free signs that are provided from the State Department of Health, and we have 125 signs that we're giving you tonight, in addition to 25 signs that'll be dropped off soon, since your high schools and your, actually, K-12 schools are all tobacco-free. And so when we heard about that through the council president, we wanted to get some signs for you for that, and those are specific for your school. So that's separate, that's a policy that the Board of Ed did a while ago, but now you'll have continuity. So we're just very happy, we've got 10 towns in Morris County that already have 100% smoke-free parks policy. And if you decide to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony, we're happy to help you with that, and there's lots of events and activities. And last but not least, Madison has also been a leader with Sustainable Jersey, and our organization recently has been speaking with them about the ability of towns to get credits for certification. And so we know that you have silver, I believe, and so the next time that you move on and to get recertified for silver, or perhaps even gold, this is an opportunity for you to gain points. And so we can talk with you about that another time, but there's so many great health, economic, and environmental benefits from this. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. And I think I forgot to remind people to sign in on that clipboard right there. Alan, did you sign in?
I'll do, I'll do.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Carmella?
I move Ordinance 46-2013.
I second.
Council discussion?
I just want to say thanks to Kara and Alan and to Masa, you know, for really working real hard. This is an important thing, is to keep our children very healthy and to keep people healthy. It's good for the environment as well, so thanks very much for coming, spending time with us, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Any other council discussion or comments? Seeing none, roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
I declare Ordinance 46-2013 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now we're on to invitation of discussion number two, which is, you may comment on anything appropriate to the borough. Step up to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone else, anyone wishing to be heard? Step right up.
Hello, Kevin Kilgore, 8th Academy Road. I'm begging you to pave our street. We'll come here week after week after week, please pave our street. I didn't understand what the actual policy is, you were describing it earlier. I was wondering if you could explain that again for us?
Basically, the idea is to make sure, we do capital budgets on an annual basis, so there is an ability for a council to appropriate money for a special project. But what we've found over the years, a couple of things, which is, all the time that led to your frustration, is to make sure that an annual budget is rolled out at once, so roads don't know, you know, they don't know where they stand. So we will have the full 2014 road capital budget approved early in 2014, earlier than we did in previous years. We're already working on the design specifications, so we're not waiting for appropriation of money to get the ball rolling. So as soon as construction season starts next spring, we'll be able to tackle the road projects.
And so when will we know?
It would be first quarter 2014.
And is there any reason that we won't be on the top of that list?
As far as I know, everything that indicates is that it's a priority road, and the funds are in place for that.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Mary Beth Forte, 7th Academy Road, just echoing my neighbor's comments around please pave our road. I know there was conversation at the last meeting around encumbering money to do so. I'm wondering if that's a continued conversation, or do we have to wait to make sure we have our old spot on the list on the new list?
Yeah, as mentioned before, is the importance to roll out an annual road project at once, so that, one, decisions are made with knowing the impact on all the roads, and number two is, as soon as you encumber for a single road, another road that has been on the list just as long, that whole neighborhood starts showing up. So it would be all at once. Once the budget is approved, the process is, the plans get prepared, a budget is put together, and based on the budget, based on the plans, and an ordinance is passed that encumbers the money. And so that will all happen first quarter 2014.
Are we starting from scratch and defining that list, or are we taking the existing list and using that?
Yeah, there's not a redefinition of the list, it's the existing list and priorities going through that list.
Okay, thank you.
May I just, and why it's important, what the mayor is saying is that the plans are being done now, so that, you know, once they start making asphalt again, after the winter's over, we can award the contracts, as opposed to, like, my first year on council, when we did Pine Rose Cedar and Beach, they didn't start the plans until like May or June, and then they actually didn't get it done that first year, it had to be done the beginning of the second year. So they want to beat that, right? And as far as I know, we still haven't closed on the Bello Avenue property, so the $468,000 hasn't come in yet, so it couldn't have been appropriated anyway. But it's, what is very important to know is that Academy and Denton are number two and three on the list, behind Ridgedale, right, the current list. And it's very important that the plans are done, so that you can hit, he can hit the road running and not have to wait, you know, and, you know, like, we all believe Green Avenue will be done, but if it just stays cold, they just can't lay the asphalt, right, this year. So we want to make sure everything is done on time and on budget.
And I think another key thing to keep in mind, as far as the way we've changed things, is we've had some years where we were very ambitious, we had the funding all in place, but had such an ambitious capital project plan, and the design work had not been done at all the year before. So the engineering department and all the consultants we use were behind the eight ball and couldn't get all the work done. By starting the design work now, we'll be well ahead of what we've done in the past, and that, our expectation is, that will be the norm and not the exception on how we run the business. And that's also, will lead nicely into the whole strategic planning process of how we do business here. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Hi, Kristen Murray, 27 Academy Road, Madison. I'm wondering if the storm drains are included in that naturally, because we have none.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes. Thank you.
Curbs too, right? Yeah, Belgium block curbs.
Yeah, and I think I mentioned it before, but we have different people at different times. There's different levels when we do roads. The more basic is the mill and overlay, which we take the machines, they strip off the, an inch or so of the existing asphalt and just repave. That's done in roads that have good curbs and good stormwater. Neighborhoods that have stormwater, that management that's behind the times, get a full reconstruction, and that takes far more design work. So you have to design the stormwater management, where the inlets go, where the water goes once it's collected, and the curb, and so on. So that's where Academy is. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Come on up, Carmen?
Carmen Pico, North Street. I'd just like to thank whoever was involved in getting the sidewalks on King's Road repaired, so that the bumps were not there anymore. Somebody put blacktop so that it would be smooth. And I figured I would come up and thank whoever it was, because a lot of times, I've been to a lot of your meetings, a lot of times people will come up here and complain, and when their complaint is satisfied, you never see them back again to thank the person that did it. So I'd just like, if you guys had anything to do with it, I'd like to thank the council for getting that safety hazard taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen, and thank you for pointing out to me, and just a reminder for everyone that you're welcome to point out challenges like that at council meetings, but you're also very welcome not to wait till a council meeting when you see an issue, to call Borough Hall and let us know, so we can get it to the right hands. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinance, and ask the Borough Clerk to read the statement.
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for December 9, 2013. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call the ordinances up for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 47, 2013, ordinance of the Borough of Madison, establishing a standing advisory audit committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move Ordinance 47-2013.
I second Ordinance 47-2013.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Call up Ordinance 48, 2013.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, mending Chapter 12 of the Borough Code entitled Court.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 48-2013.
I second it.
Council discussion? Ostry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to note that this is an expansion of a shared service that we have already established here, and we're introducing a new town.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 49-2013.
I second it.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, may the clerk read the statement.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected and fall in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Consent Agenda Resolutions 301-2013 to 318-2013.
I second.
Council discussion, or any of that need to be pulled? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business, I just want to make sure everyone caught the clerk when she read the statement on the ordinances, as far as the hearing. I think I was mentioning that the hearings for the ordinances introduced tonight would be next council meeting, but we have a short break in between, so it is the December meeting, you'll have those hearings. There is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers?
Okay, Public Safety, $16,582.75. Health and Public Assistance, $3,938.14. Public Works and Engineering, $210,262.28. Community Affairs, $2,216.46. Finance and Borough Clerk, $5,636,556.75. And Utilities, $162,352.20. Total is $6,31,908.51.
Mayor, I move approval to the vouchers.
Second.
Discussion, roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Walkowitz?
Yes.
There is no new business, and it's back on you again, Ben.
In the absence of our most junior councilperson, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you all. Yep. Let's go outside so we can warm up.